Bob, you ready?
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call the Adam's County Year School District Regular Board Meeting for August 14th. If we call our actual pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to add the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Joanne, too. Add to the agenda. Mr. Bassett has been excused. Discussion. If you're going to start this vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Board of Education reports, anyone?
Well, I went to the prepared teachers. I went to her to try to teach her lunching today. Our superintendent did a presentation. It was very well received. They even wanted to come out. He talked about his seven Cs.
Eight Ns.
Eight Ns. Eight Cs.
I would like to remind people that the Board will meet again for the annual meeting two weeks from tonight. A budget meeting will be before that, which will be 7:30 correct, Ronnie? And then at eight o'clock will be the regular annual meeting. It'll be in this room. So, anyone in the district that attend that meeting will have a sign up at the door. So, that will be two weeks from tonight. Also, I attended CISA 5 dinner about two weeks ago. We're working on some policies for CISA 5. One has to do with, one of the things you do on CISA 5 is you can travel to the national conference. And we're going to change the rules a little bit. You could usually go every other year. Or if somebody didn't go, you could actually go a couple of years in a row. We're going to do it so you get to go two out of three years. But remember, that is for the district who holds that spot. So, if you change people in the middle, that person may still, we used to have a rule that if you change people, the person coming in couldn't go for a year. But that's the longer issue. So, while we have not board on that, but that's a direction's going. Also, we have talked about maybe, we have term limits currently that are two-year terms. But most of us have been on that board for fifteen to twenty years because nobody wants to run for that board. Because it is another night, another meeting. We actually have two people that are on the board that aren't in their districts or representing other districts. So, you couldn't get them people even to. So, we're talking about doing with terms because people just don't want to do it as much. So, we'll be board on that in September, but that's where CISA 5 is right now. Go ahead.
So, I attended the county fair, like a lot of people on this. One thing, FFA, just like farmers, it's a 24/7 job. Our kids, you know, did a great job. It's a 24/7. Just because school's out doesn't mean FFA quits. Our kids did a great job. They had some successful sales to hopefully put away some money for college or whatever their future is. I just want to say congratulations to all those students that put that effort in for this school summer.
Anyone else? We'll move on to our new student representative, Hallie Engel. And Hallie, is there any question?
Okay, so hi everyone, my name is Hallie. I'm a sophomore this year at the high school. I'm super excited to be able to talk with all of you guys once a month. Just some events happen specifically in student council from levels, elementary school all the way up to high school. So, sorry if I'm a little nervous. We had, like, once a week, our, some student council members, me and the student council office at the high school, to just plan some stuff for state conference because this year we are hosting, which will be at UW-Madison. It's a big project for our school and I'm really excited because it's just good to get kind of our school name out there and it's a good way to represent us. So, that's been a big, big project we've been working on. At these meetings, we've been planning things from the names of each level of the floors, decorations, all kinds of things. Along with that, we've been also, we have a plan set for homecoming. We actually have a handout, which you can use. So, one of the changes we had to do, well, I guess we did it last year too, but we had to do coronation on a Sunday this year because it was a conflict with FFA. They had a field trip planned and we wanted it to be fair for all students to be able to go. And they would have taken away like twenty kids eligible to be in it. So, that's one of the changes, but this is just kind of our plan. You can look it over, any questions, just let me know. Along with that, this past week at the fair, many, many students came to help with this Lions Club concession stand. This is a good way for the freshmen to kind of get an intro to what student council's all about. And we had a big turnout. We actually made just under $200 in tips, which is almost three times what we made last year. And so, it was very successful. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, just ask away.
Moving to the board, Hallie, and we'll be looking forward to seeing you every month. Consider adjournment to closed session.
Move to go to closed session.
Jim? Motion made by Jessica and Jim to consider adjournment to closed session on section 19.851(c). Considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation, doubt of any public disclosure or waste of governmental body as due to picture or exercise expressly to a contract issued with such agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Am I voted yes, it passes eight zero. This should be short, we're going back to the office. Looking at that, no concession. Is there a motion for a consent agenda?
No motion.
Melissa?
I'll second.
Is there a second? Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Joanne, to approve the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this month, there is meeting minutes, the co-curricular contracts, hirings of Ashley Frye, an English teacher at the high school, Caitlin Amstetter Decker, a social studies teacher at A.F.E. Megan Mack, special ed teacher at A.F.E. Hiring Levon Berber, special ed teacher at A.F.E. Austin. Thank you. Intern slash special ed teacher. Paige Coopers, second, a second grade teacher at A.F.E. Leah Tennessee, third grade teacher at Grand Marsh. Erica Serstad, elementary social worker. Retirement of Lauren McPuley, a teacher at A.F.E. Legendator Brad Lane, High School Social Studies. Legendator Brian Rum, teacher at Grand Marsh. Presentation of Tara Rum, 4K teacher at A.F.E. We also have some gifts. What is it, a trumpet by the Dumlos. It costs up to $400. We also have some awards from the Adams Colonia Electric Co-op. One is a $500 award for getting Turkey Project to Mr. Moore. And Randy Kane, correct?
Con.
Con. I have to click on all of them. So, Karen Jacob Holbert with an award of $500 for her classroom came and built it. And the last one is digital art project for Monique Olson for $500. Thank you, Adams Colonia Electric Co-op for that. Discussion of that motion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Am I voted yes, pass it to you. With that, we're going to start the board, so we're going to start with A.F.E.
So, last week, Thursday, we had fourteen staff members kindergarten and first grade in. And we learned about handwriting without tears. Have you ever heard it? So, the purpose of this is that everything, every letter is formed with a big curve, a little curve, a little line and a big line. And they teach kids using this vocabulary, so everybody uses the same thing. They also have slate boards. And there's a smiley face up on top, which tells the kids this is the top of their page. And this is, they always need to start there. The kits come with a lot of stuff. There's a lot of hand motions and singing and all that kind of stuff. Little creatures that they create called Matt Man using the big curve, the little curve. So, they spent all of Thursday here learning about that. And that'll be passed on to their students.
Grand Marsh, okay, I can do that. Two brief things, first of all, Grand Marsh is working on some space issues, the use of, because we have, remember last year, we moved special ed services into town, consolidating those services. That provides an opportunity for us to kind of reuse some of those rooms and some space, which we're going to be using some, obviously, our teachers have brainstormed those things. Using what we learned Monday and Tuesday, actually, last week. Some of the administrative team went down, learning by doing, we did some PLC work, professional learning communities. So, we're looking forward to putting some of those PLC things with Laura's, Laura's leading us and keeping us move forward with some of those things. We're looking forward to that improvement process opportunity. So, we're going to kind of use that, instigating some of those things in space, working with our community of staff, putting that together in a positive way. Obviously, moving our school forward, so kids benefit the most. So, that's what's happening down at Grand Marsh. All right.
Okay, thank you. Similarly to what Garrett said, our school improvement team, our city team, we, last year, a number of them applied and they became our guiding coalition for our building. And that, that team wrote a strategic plan for our building and laid that out, rolled it out to our entire staff the very last day of in-service at the end of the school year. So, that team's been getting together over the course of the summer. We reconvened again last Thursday, talking about how we will be implementing different structures within our building and using our collaboration time, so that we really are a professional learning community to move our, all of our initiatives and our objectives along. Also, another big initiative of this team, and we've been working with some community partners, is we're going to be implementing an eighth grade capstone project, where eventually, every student in the middle school will be having to do something to add to that final capstone. But currently, this team is working with MSTC and Derek Smith, our economic community development professional, so that he, so that we are working to bridge certain activities for our students. So, we look forward to that eighth grade capstone project. Finally, our special ed teachers were in today and our math teachers have been in professional development as well.
So, two initiatives this year that we're working towards is a freshman academy. Trimester one, all freshmen will take part in a co-teaching. We're going to split them into three cohorts and they'll be taught by an English teacher and a social studies teacher to keep them in, in one spot, to help them transition. And then we'll focus some social emotional learning into that curriculum as well. So, we have four teachers involved. Jessica Stokes, one of our new coaches, is our part-time instructional coach. She's working with the team this summer to create that curriculum and to implement it. So, they're going to start with a theme for the students to learn from and then focus the English and the social studies into that program. So, it's, I'm excited to see that work and excited for the freshmen to kind of be gradually released into the high school environment. And then the second thing, we got to start our pilot of program last year because of the snow days and the minutes we had to add. We did a read aloud at the high school and it went over very well. Anecdotally, we saw a lot of engagement by students in reading. So, teachers read to their students, the students get to select which book. The teacher picks the book and the students sign up for it. So, we're going to do that again this year, between first and second hour, I believe, second, between second and third hour. Thirteen-minute period where students will select a room that they're going to go and they'll stay in that room for the trimester and get to listen to that book. We hope that inspires more reading and shows that the, the teachers are reading their favorite books right along with the kids. And I had a chance last year to step into these rooms and when subs weren't available and read. And that time just flies by, we really probably could read for about thirty minutes or forty minutes. So, thirteen minutes for the entire year, students will be in a read aloud. Thanks.
I just realized how I left myself off the agenda. So, next one, and I'll probably have more to share as well.
I will just wrote that down for Laura.
I know, I.
That was one, exclusion restraint group by Martin.
So, it's our annual exclusion and restraint reporting. I have not really seen a lot of changes from last year. For those of you that are new to it, you can see the memo, kind of takes you through what you're going to see here. The second spreadsheet, we kind of go over and above and tell you, without telling you the students, the number of students that have exclusion or restraint, what type of restraint if needed, if they had to be transported, if they have an individual education plan, if they have a behavior intervention plan, if the parents were involved, parents are always supposed to be involved, just so you are aware. If the incident required us to reconvene the IEP, if the incident required us to revise the behavior intervention plan, also if the police school liaison officer was involved. And then also, you'll see, we have, if there was a team debriefing. The next page, I think the third page you'll see takes us through, it's just a little flow chart showing what is all, what all happens when a student requires exclusion or restraint. Interesting enough, I pulled a little bit of data over the last couple of years. So, in sixteen seventeen, we had eighteen students that required exclusion or restraint and those were thirty-eight incidences. Seventeen eighteen, fourteen students and twenty-eight incidences. And eighteen nineteen, fourteen students and twenty-two incidences. I think a lot of that can be credited to the buildings and our continual conversation that we're hands-off and really working on those de-escalation strategies and teaching our, really teaching our staff how to better de-escalate students. So, this is totally to their credit, because if you recall, at one point in fifteen sixteen, we were up to seventy-seven. And that was just one of those like, oh. So, definitely great improvements, so.
And didn't we have to report that to the state? Was that I?
Yeah, well, we have, we report this. There always, there always seems to be an open records request for exclusion and restraint. So, there's a reason why, it's good, but it's good data.
Any other questions? Thank you. Food service crisis. If you look, there's a letter. Yeah, go ahead, Nikki, you can talk.
Okay, because of our K.R.K. passes, we are not required to increase food prices. We are still part of the community eligibility provisions of eighth graders. Enroll and will have free meals, breakfast and lunch. And the high school will remain at $2.70.
Has anyone got a question? There's no action on this thing, we're not decreasing or decreasing prices. This is for informational. Thank you, Nikki. With that, we'll move on to policy committee reports, starting with mine.
The following policies have been moved into second reading. Policy fifty-six thirty for poll collection. Fifty-eight seventy, student production of goods and services. Sixty-three thirty, leasing school property. Sixty-seven hundred, Fair Labor Standards Act. Sixty-eight thirty, audit. Seventy-two seventeen, weapons. Seventy-four forty, facility security. Eighty-three ten, public records. Eighty-three forty, providing a reference. Eighty-four oh five, environmental health and safety. Eighty-four sixty-two, mandatory recording of student abuse in effect and threats of violence. Eighty-five hundred, food service. Eighty-six, eighty-seven sixty, student accident insurance. And ninety-one thirty, public requests, suggestions or complaints. We tabled seventy-five thirty zero two, staff use of personal communication devices. And eighty-four zero seven, school resource officer program. We did add one statement to share that with the board and send it to second reading with that addition. And that is it.
Thank you. We are, finance committee report, Joanne.
Okay, finance committee, that's six forty-five. First item on the agenda was the July bills. And on behalf of the finance committee, I am to approve general fund checks number eight one zero five seven through eight one one six three and ACH checks number two zero 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 one through two zero 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 six and two five four nine through two five six nine, totaling one million, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And activity fund checks number three zero seven nine zero through three zero seven nine three, totaling one thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars for the month of July.
Is there a second? Jim? Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jim, to approve general fund checks number eight one zero five seven through eight one one six three and ACH checks number two zero 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 one through two zero 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 six. And twenty-five forty-seven through twenty-five sixty-nine, totaling one nine two hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Thirteen cents and activity fund checks number thirty-seven nine zero through thirty-seven nine three, totaling one thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars for the month of July. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
And my vote is yes, pass it to you.
Okay, next on the agenda was a presentation on the budget, publication and revenue limit. And the next thing was the credit commitments. And on behalf of the finance committee, I am making a motion to approve the commitment with Gaddard's Community Bank for a short-term borrowing limit of three million dollars with a 1.85% fixed rate.
Is there a second?
I will stick with that.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jim, to approve Adams Community Bank for the line of credit for not to exceed three million dollars with a fixed, fixed rate of 1.85% fixed. Discussion. Go ahead.
I just, you know, with the extra financial aid that we're getting this coming year, we really need to start putting money away so that we're not doing the short-term borrowing. It's like having a credit card, you're paying those expenses that are taking away from our children and then, you know, our district as a whole. Just hope as a board that we look at that in the future for budgeting. Well, like, you know, internally, Ms. Andrew Hyden and I have been talking about our, our fund balance and potentially trying to increase that a little bit. The issue is that right now, we're relatively plus, but over time, we may need those dollars.
Anyone else? If you know more discussion, start this vote with Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Kathy, Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Am I voted yes, pass it to you.
Okay, and that was it for finance committee.
Next thing on the agenda is nomination of local businesses for Wazbo Business Honor Roll. This came up, was by, I did not know had been doing this for some years, that they recognized businesses that helped out school districts through the year, but you can only nominate five. And the five that are on here, I've been told to be by administrators of school, some school board members. We can change any of these out, we can put new ones in, but we can only nominate five. And I was talking to Tom down, down in River Valley, they kind of did it by sections at one point. But if you read the nomination paper, it should be people that have done it in the past, Lou. Okay? So, I need somebody to, I need somebody to make a motion with these five on or change them to whom you like. Go ahead.
As the question for the motion is made, so if we, Johnny, these five, the following year, nominate different ones.
That's correct.
So, do, is it usual that some of them come back for the second year roll? I don't know the protocol.
I just noticed that, I just got a report that we have over 250 businesses, so I don't think they're going to come back to us.
That's where, that's where. That's on us. They have to be the article in one of our publications as well. It's a great idea.
Is there a motion? Move to approve the list that is provided. Okay. Is there a second? Kathy? Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Kathy, who approved the local business nominations for the Wazbo Business Honor Roll, and they are Milk Source, Coin Market, Evans County Times Reporter, Mountain Country Club and Allied Co-op. Discussion. Kathy.
Will we have a special presentation, like, still more?
Yeah, we'll, when it comes in, we'll probably play it on the computer.
In my previous experience, we would recognize people at large events. So, maybe a couple at the last two home football games, a couple at, a couple basketball games, maybe a wrestling event. But we tried to finish that sometime before the start of the new year. And it was a nice recognition for people, a really nice recognition for people to come out at that, at a football game, come out at the middle of a wrestling match, bond of all, it was, it was cool.
Yes, so if more public, we'll know.
It's a good thing.
Yes. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
And my vote is yes, pass it to you. Okay. Next thing is, consider adjournment to closed section on the 19.851(c). Consider, considering employment, promotion, competition, performance evaluation, doubt of any. Considering employment, compensation, performance evaluation, doubt of any public employer or waste of governmental body as jurisdiction or exercise responsibility.
So, vote.
Jeff?
Second.
Who is second on that? I checked Jim. Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Jim to move to consideration adjournment to closed section of section nineteen point eight five one C. Discussion. Hearing none, start this vote with Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Pass as a zero. We're gonna go to closed session. We're gonna ask people to leave this room tonight. We may come back in open session if we have motions in closed session, but if not, just really, the meeting will be adjourned. So, if you guys would like to leave, you may.